The equivalent of three and a quarter percent of an increase in the 2017 sales tax over 2016. And at this point, we are actually negative 0.74 percent. And those numbers are through September. So we have three months yet to report, but the trend that we see is not good. And so for that reason, what we did in this budget was we assumed that the sales tax revenue would be flat of 17 over 16 with showing no increase to sales tax revenues. And in 2018, budgeting 1.25 percent increase, which is almost a third of what we budgeted this past year. Ashley, if you wouldn't mind putting that slide up. We have a slide here that we want to share with everybody. If you can blow that up. There we go. County Executive had asked me to put together some information for a meeting we have with the legislative delegation on Wednesday, but I thought, after looking at the information, I thought it kind of told the tale of sales tax here. And this is a 10-year spread of the percentages of increase in our sales tax revenues from 2007 through 2017. And I wanted to show this for a specific reason that I'll get into, but it starts off in 2007 where there's a 4 percent increase, 4.37, I think, yeah, I can read that better without my glasses on. So 4.37 percent in 2007, and then, of course, we know that the recession-
And that was pretty typical in the years before.
Yeah, it was. It was quite typical, and you see that after the recession takes place. But then for three years in a row, we have negative sales tax to where 2009 was the bottom of the trough during the bottom of the recession, and then we started crumbling out of it. And in 2011, we actually get back to a rate of increase of 5.75 percent. 2011 was the point that we pretty well got back to pre-recessionary levels of sales tax collections. Moving across the graph, though, you see 2012 was a pretty comparable year, pretty flat there, but a still nice rate of increase. 2013, we're not really sure what really happened there, but things went a little soft, and our rate of increase was only 2.06 percent. And then in 2014, we go to one of the higher rates of increase that we've had, at 7.41 percent. But what I really want to point out going from 14 forward is just notice where that line is going. These are rates of increase over the last three years. So in 2015, our rate of increase dropped from 7 percent to 5 percent. And in 15 to 16, our rate of increase dropped to just below 4 percent. And presently, for 2017, we're looking at a projected, well, that's where we are right now, at 0.74 percent negative. In looking at where we are now in 2017, and you look back to the recession of 2008, 9, and 10, we knew what was going on during the recession. Everybody was taken a hit. Everything was slowing down. You know, one of the worst recessions we've seen in modern history. And slide forward to 2017, where we are negative again in sales tax, and there is no recession going on. The record stock market levels. Unemployment is the lowest in 17 years or some figure like that. The economy's doing very well, yet we are negative by 0.74 percent. And there's a troublesome trend there going from 2014 to 2017 because it's on a pretty steep path downward. So in a good economy, what does that really point to? And we've been talking about some of this for a while, but the rate of increase in e-commerce is just, I think, taking the blocks out from underneath us here and eroding our traditional sales tax base. So-
Let me ask you a specific question about that. I think our house is fairly typical, and Amazon seems to be coming a lot to our house. What sales tax, what sales tax do we collect, if any, from when somebody buys product on Amazon?
None. We don't get a sales tax right now. Amazon is voluntarily paying a use tax until they establish NEXUS in Missouri, which I presume is sometime next year when the Hazelwood plant or the Hazelwood facility opens up. In the meantime, any Missouri customer that buys from Amazon is being charged a use tax, and that's going to our Parks Department. Once the facility opens up at Hazelwood, then Amazon has NEXUS in Missouri, and the only sales that generate a sales tax at that point are going to be the sales that are shipped from that location, and Hazelwood and St. Louis County will receive the benefit of those revenues. Use tax goes away because once that facility opens up, Amazon has NEXUS in the state of Missouri, and sales tax takes over, and the use tax goes away. So the use tax right now is, we're collecting somewhere in the area of about $50,000 a month in Parks use tax. So it's not a good picture.
And that's why we're going to present this to the members of the delegation so they understand kind of what's going on.
Retail sales increased by 15.6, e-commerce sales increased by 15.6 percent in 2016. Sales, retail sales grew just over 3 percent. So you can see, there's a disproportionate shift going on here.
Do you have a chart that shows this actual sales tax revenue generated over the same time period?
I don't have that here, but-
Could you send it to me?
I've got that analysis, yes.
Mr. Cronin has a question. Based on the trend, based on what I know about retailing going forward as a retailer, your budget is predicted on a 1.25 percent sales tax collection increase for next year. Anybody that will look at that chart would say, if you extrapolate that chart one more year, you would probably be looking at a 3 to 4 percent decrease for next year. How did you come up with a 1.25 percent projected increase for next year?
We're really just hoping for some turnaround at this point. Going from a rate of increase of 3 and 1/4 down to 1 and 1/4, putting the brakes on and taking it from there because we really don't have anything other than some indication that perhaps the state of Missouri has not provided all of the information to us yet in the last two periods because they just shifted to a new reporting portal. So their system has been slow to report. We normally get the sales tax numbers first or second business day of the month, and we're getting them a week and a little bit more than that into the following month. The detail is slow coming to us. And when we met with the Missouri DOR a couple of weeks ago to talk about Amazon and e-commerce and what that really looks like on a statewide level, they mentioned to us at that point, because at that point, we only had one month's worth of reporting on the portal, and we said, man, this is, it's really looking bad. And they said, well, don't base this on the August numbers because they cut their reporting off three business days early in order to try to get things processed. So besides the traditional holdbacks that the state has always had, and I think selectively holding back some reports and basically for cash flow purposes, going to this new portal has not been totally smooth for them. So I'm hoping to see some turnaround in this, but as we get into the last three months of reporting for 2017, we won't have the final numbers until sometime in February.
So again, that negative-
What are you going to do, though, if you've got a 4 percent decrease for next year? What's plan B?
The answer to his questions will have to freeze.
Correct. There's budgetary steps that the county executive is empowered to do. If we see no other sources of revenue coming in that help offset that impact, then we would be forced to implement other budget measures to counteract the-
There's been a thing on the news, too, about this guy, they call him the Plate Man in Illinois, who's actually is a former Department of Revenue employee for Illinois, and people are going to him to register their cars and pay their sales taxes in Illinois because there's no property tax on cars in Illinois or Iowa or Alaska. So I wonder how much of that we're losing, too, to people that are, I know people that actually have a trust in Alaska, register all their vehicles, pay their taxes, the subtaxes are minimal there, get plates for Alaska and drive cars in Missouri. There is a reporting thing at the Department of Revenue website where if you've got a neighbor that's driving parked with Alaska plates in the driveway every day, you could actually report them on the Department of Revenue site. But, I mean, that's a big chunk of, if they're not paying sales tax on cars, that's a big chunk of dough to the county.
Department of Motor Vehicle sales tax on car purchases is the single largest source of sales tax. It outpaces by a large margin all of the big box stores that are in the county. DMV is the number one source.
Do we have any TIFs being paid off next year?
Uh, none that I'm aware of, no.
I think the one may be the levy tax out there in Old Town.
Yeah, the Old Town St. Peters, I think, pays off in a couple of years because I know that the new development that's going in down there can only enjoy the benefit and be part of that TIF for a few years before it's done. But DMV sales tax, going back to that, fortunately, DMV sales tax is 5 or 6 percent higher this year than last year. So it amplifies even further what's happening to the traditional-
Retail sales.
Retail sales, right. Because DMV, fortunately, needs help carrying at least some of the weight to keep that number where it's at right now.
So the DMV number's actually up?
Yes.
That's surprising because the SAR is going to be down about 800,000 vehicles year over year. So when you look at estimated vehicles that are going to be sold in the United States this year, we're going to be down 800,000 vehicles year over year, and they're expecting next year to be down a little bit more. So to Joe's point, I think the more conservative we can be, the better off we're going to be because I wouldn't expect vehicle sales in the county to continue outpacing the market, even though we are the number one area in vehicle sales in almost every make and model that's not luxury of any area around here. Our vehicle sales leads out here. So we buy a lot of cars evidently. Hope, keep buying. There you go.
That's a good thing. Yep. So on the revenue side, aside from sales tax, the other categories of revenue in the general fund are pretty typical, and there are little plus and minus in those different categories, not seeing a great deal of increase in most of those other categories, like the collector's commissions or building permits or recorder's fees, things like that, muni court. Most of those are pretty stable from 17's budget into the 18 budget. Nothing really too dramatic there. On the employee benefit side, the employee raise is set at 2 percent, and that's fully reflected in that budget. The county's function of health insurance is increased 2 percent. And the health plan, perhaps recall that in 2017, we hired a health benefits consultant by the name of Corn Ferry out of Dallas to evaluate our current health plan structure. Our structure really hasn't been evaluated since it first came into being in the early 2000s when an actuarial study was done and recommendations were made about setting premiums at a certain level. Historically and traditionally, since that time, we've increased premiums 2 percent, 3 percent, that kind of thing, you know, on a year-to-year basis. Some years, 0 percent, like during the recession. Tried to make the pain as minimal as possible, given the fact that we were holding back on pay raises and things like that. But what we wanted to do was have the structure of the health insurance plan evaluated by an outside source to take a look at the structure. We have four categories of health premiums that we have in our plan, and it's employee-only, employee-child, employee-spouse, and family. So we wanted some evaluation about the structure of that plan and sought recommendations from them if they saw opportunities to do so. So their findings were, first off, that they believed that our plan was a little out of balance between the employee-only and the employee-spouse categories paying too little and the employee-child and the family plans paying too much. So what we did is, in the calculation of rates for 2018, we took half of the increases that Corn Ferry had recommended for the employee-only and the employee-spouse categories and raised premiums by those amounts. We left employee, child, and family unchanged from 2016 to help balance the scales a little bit. And in addition, the other change, Dave?
Oh, go ahead. Maybe you were going to touch on that.
Okay. The other change to the plan was that we put into place a 5 percent co-insurance feature. Once an employee gets to their deductible amount, any claims over satisfying their $300 deductible will be subject to a 5 percent co-insurance provision, up to the maximum, which has been in place, the co-insurance maximum has been in place for a number of years at $6,350 for a single maximum and $12,700 for a family maximum. So there is an increase in premiums to the employee-only and the employee-spouse categories, and a 5 percent co-insurance will apply to claims once an employee-
What was it before? Was there a 5 percent co-insurance feature before?
No, no, that is new. And part of the reason for that was the fact that after talking with Corn Ferry, our plan was still seen as being a rather favorable plan-
We were talking about before.
So that the employees generally should share in the cost of the plan more so than the structure of their premiums. So that's why we went forward with that provision. So that's something new in our plan this year, the 5 percent co-insurance is new. There was a co-insurance provision if you went to people out of network, the kind of thing where there was a co-insurance feature before. But typically, anybody who was in network didn't have a co-insurance provision in their plan. They would just satisfy their deductible and copay or treatment going in for office visits or specialists, those kinds of things.
The employee and employee spouse rates, okay, that you say are going up, about how much percentage-wise?
Well, percentage-wise, it's quite a bit, but, for example, on the basic plan, the basic plan is, the employee's portion of the basic plan right now is zero. And I don't know if I have, let me check here and see if I have that scheduled with me or not. Yes, I do. So on the basic plan, employee-only had zero cost before, and that's going up to $2,896 a month. And I'll be happy to give you guys this if you want to write a bunch of numbers down. The employee-only on the enhanced plan was $3942 a month before, and it's going to $6,548. The employee-spouse category of the basic plan was $16276 last year, and it's going up by about $53 to $21515 a month. And the employee-spouse on the enhanced plan, about the same, about just under $50, $18726 last year to $24486 a month in 2018. And the employee-child and the family plans do not change. You know, it's something that we believe we needed to do. When you think about keeping up with the rate of inflation generally, the thing that doesn't cut it as far as health plans are concerned, especially when you're self-insured, is the fact that medical insurance or medical inflation is ramping up at a much higher rate than conventional inflation rates and conventional cost of living. So what you might see in a 2 percent cost of living increase, 2 and 1/2 percent this year, medical inflation is three times that number easily, and in some areas considerably higher than that. So those are all factors that point to the fact that there needs to be a higher cost-share component by our employees in the health plan. We saw in late 2015 and into 2016, when we had to do a supplemental funding to the general fund in 2016 and carry that forward into the 2017 budget, that holistically, we were talking about close to $4 million that needed to be infused into the self-insurance fund in order to keep it whole. Fortunately, our claims have moderated some during 2017, and we don't have the rampant rise in claims like we saw over the previous year and a half or so. So we did not put any supplemental funding into the self-insurance fund, other than the premium increases that we just talked about.
But you should be, you know, if you're thinking 50 a month, that's 600 a year. Average, say if a county employee's making 30 grand a year, he gets a 2 percent raise, that's 600 bucks. So what they're getting in raise will pretty much balance out the increase in healthcare costs, so the net paycheck should be about the same for 30 grand and under and above, that actually pay raises more than the cases.
In those categories.
Yeah, if you were employee-only or employee-spouse.
Yep.
Do we know what the majority of the insurance category?
Majority are family and employee children, I think. Do you remember? I don't recall.
Yeah, I mean, those are the two predominant, but we can give you those numbers as well.
We do have the, we do have the populations, and I just don't have them with you here, but we can get-
It doesn't sound like, for most employees in the county, though, their net checks could be the same or maybe even a little better, even with the higher premiums due there.
Yeah, correct.
So that's, at least they're not going the other direction. That's good.
Right, right. So that was the, part of the importance, county executive wanted to try to benchmark a 2 percent pay raise because we knew he had changes to the health plan, and we were able to accommodate that at the end.
And the raise is all merit, and the reason for that is that we were told the last time we looked at the studies that were coming through by the staffer in HR is looking at it, that our beginning salaries are still pretty healthy against the market, but as people are here a little bit longer, we start to slide below market. So this way, we're not moving the grid up this year, but we are moving people along their grid.
Well, I think that's pretty sad, really. A lot of employees won't even get a raise, and it's not administration's fault, and it's nobody on this council's fault. I think our forefathers put all the eggs in one basket, and the only thing that we have revenue that's coming in for the general fund is sales tax. So and as a part of that, I want to add that 62 percent of our budget goes for law enforcement. So we need to either need to come up with a Proposition P or some other method to increase our revenues so we don't start losing good employees and police officers over to St. Louis County where they're all getting substantial raises. So that's a concern I have, and I don't have an answer.
Sticking with healthcare for just a moment, if we could, you mentioned that you had this study done by whoever it was.
Corn Ferry.
Thank you. Did they just look at the structure, or did they look at the plan overall and help us look at, is self-insurance still the way to go, or should we be looking at, and I know we made the decision in the early 2000s to go that route, but is that still the best plan?
Yeah, I don't think they cast any dispersions about the fact that we're self-insured.
Do they look at it, is my question? Was that included in the scope of work that they did?
I think they looked at it more from, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Joanne, but I think they looked at it more from the standpoint, is your, is the health, is the self-insured health plan a sustainable model? And I think generally, yes, they still believe that. They offered up four different scenarios in their recommendations. And the scenarios went from just kind of moving premium dollars around for a no change, but that didn't address the funding issue that we have in the self-insurance fund. So we adopted a model where they were actually advocating premium increases. But generally, I don't think, and I'd have to go back and look, but I don't remember any really feeling on the part of Corn Ferry that our self-insurance model was at issue.
No, in fact, in one of our phone calls with them, I think that they felt that if we were in the market, we'd be a lot worse off than where we're starting from right now. They made a few small suggestions as well about maybe to change the excess insurance amount by a small percentage, that it wouldn't cost us a lot, it might help us with some of our outcomes, but-
We in fact did that, didn't we? Didn't we raise it by 25,000? 200 to 225, I think.
Right, that's what he's doing in the next round.
Yeah, so we're raising the ceiling at which our coverage stops on a claim by $25,000 to take a little more of it perhaps, but-
Was there a budget impact or an estimate on revenues that might be gained if we put in the 5 percent co-insurance feature?
That is part of the funding source and funding assumptions for the self-insurance plan in 2018, I guess.
What, that feature, though, what is, what do they think it's going to generate as far as additional premiums coming in?
The only thing I could do is look to see, I'll wait a text from Ms. Salvo, but if she's got-
I mean, we're going to be doing these budget meetings more, so if you need to-
Let me get that.
Determine the answer.
Take the time, man.
It's got to be, kind of self-insured fund, it's got to be close to 5 percent because the fact that you reduce, you're paying, the doctor bill, 95 percent, you pay the county 5 percent by-
But it still bumps up against those, if you have something catastrophic, like open-heart surgery or something, you're still, if I understood you correctly, that it's still going to be 6,300 out of pocket.
There's, what I do remember is the 5 percent co-insurance feature, we were ballparking that that was going to generate a little more than $400,000 on $8 million worth of claims. And on the premiums, it seemed like it was a like amount of 400 to 500,000, but let me get that for you.
That'd be great.
I think we were right about a million dollars.
Not change in premium, total premium.
No, a change in premium, I think, was like a half a million more revenue or something like that.
Just get it to me when you can. Thank you.
I have another question. I'm sorry. Go ahead. If we end up negative for sales tax for this year, okay, and let's say that trend continues and we're negative 3 or 4 percent, doesn't that open the door under Hancock for us to institute a property tax like we used to have years ago? Would it not?
No, not initially. If that trend continued for any length of time, and I wouldn't wish that on anybody because it would be just horrific on our budget. because it would be just horrific on our budget. It would take us more than one year. As the provision in the law for the sales tax rollback has taken place over the last couple of years, starting in 2015, we crossed the line to where we no longer had a leviable general fund property tax, okay? So the sales tax increases that we had in fifteen, sixteen, and whatever we have in seventeen have put us deeper beyond the zero point. So we have to recover, at this point, about nine cents of property tax. Where our sales, our sales tax have eroded the calculation to a point to where our tax rate in the general fund right now is like a negative nine cents. So we would have to lose that much sales tax in order to recover nine cents, just to get back to zero. So we would have to be negative for an extended period of time in sales tax to get back to that threshold, and it's a perpetual calculation, so it has to be, you know, it has to be updated every year. So we're at around nine cents to, on the negative side of the property tax.
So, let me jump in here if you don't mind. So the only way that we could ever, because nobody's paying personal property tax in this county, any money to the county government for general revenue. So we would have to go, it would have to go before the vote of the people to raise personal property tax.
Yes, real estate and personal property, yes.
And if we don't do that, then we're going to either have to start cutting services or find some, I don't know what else we could do.
Right.
Joanne, are you worried with the passage of Prop. P in St. Louis City and St. Louis County, and the fact that our guys are going to probably get a two percent merit? Are you worried, is PD worried at all about us losing guys because the scale just got tipped on the pay levels east of here?
Not yet.
Okay.
We were way ahead of them. We had city and county officers applying to us. So basically, what they've done is leveled the field.
Okay.
So no, not yet.
So we got a window of time to work on that, then?
We do.
Our competition right now for officers isn't necessarily across the river, though, is it? It's more of with our current municipalities who are here, isn't it?
It's both.
Okay.
We have them coming from across the river and from all over here, when they apply us. Over here, I think, you know, some of the cities definitely pay better than we do, but we have a lot of career options for our gaps. If they're interested in more than patrol or detective, worth the place to be.
Does anybody else have anything on health? Let's move on to...
All right. Another feature in the budget this year is a change in methodology from how we have calculated the administrative charge to non-general revenue departments. Historically in the past, we've used a one percent of revenues factor for calculating that charge, and that's to charge non-general revenue funds for things that, services that finance provides, information, technology, facilities, maintenance, and, you know, all the overhead types of support services that each of these departments receives. Questions come up in years past, like, where did the one percent come from? How did we arrive at one percent? And it was, the answer pretty much was, well, just because that's what we've been doing all these years. So every other year, for quite some time, we have had a cost allocation plan that has been calculated and prepared for us by a professional that does these types of studies. And a cost allocation plan takes each department's overhead based upon that department's assessment of how much they, how much does IS provide to the assessor's office, or how much does it provide to emergency communications or road and bridge? And so all of the, all of that information, each department puts their responses together, and then all this information is brought together to essentially monetize the value of those overhead services. We've had that study at our disposal for a long time. It's been used in the prosecuting attorney's office for factoring or figuring an indirect cost rate for a program that they have in the child support area, and workforce development is also used for their indirect costing rate for the support services that they can get reimbursed for from the state. So we've had to get that study done every other year, and we decided to start going down the road of using that cost allocation plan because it gives us something tangible to look at, and it's independently prepared. I think his name is Maximus, they've done our cost allocation plans for probably seven or ten years. And so we adopted as the overhead administrative charge this year, the amount that was recommended in that cost allocation plan that was done at the end of 2016. So it's generated some additional revenue to the general fund, and it's needed as well, but it's, it was somewhat out of necessity to do that, just to try to get the general fund to balance. At the same time, it's a much more credible methodology to use than just using the, well, same old story as last year, we're just going to charge the one percent. But I do believe that the one percent really was a number that had outlived its usefulness because I think it was low, and we saw that in the numbers.
Is it the same percentage, then, that's across the board, or does each department have its own number?
Each department has its own number, based upon the level of services that the highway department might use for IS, you know. Highway uses less of IS than the assessor's office, for example. So it's going to vary upon just the data in each department's report as to how much use they get out of the other departments that are rendering the services to them. So it's kind of a custom factor that's being applied to those funds, based on their usage of general fund services.
Was that received with understanding from the departments, or was it, is it something that we're going to care about when we get to the department side?
I think by and large, the departments were very cooperative. We had some discussions, the assessor in particular. Scott had a much larger charge than he's had in prior years. But we had some discussions with him, he understands it, doesn't like it, but by and large, the, when we explained the situation to the elected officials and that were involved in some cases, and the other department heads that are non-general revenue, they understood, and they're...
To answer your question, though, I do think you may hear from a department head or two who tells you that they think the general revenue ought to buy everything for everybody, and then whatever special funds they have are by things in addition.
A noble statement. Sure.
Talk more about that next meeting, I guess.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about that? Moving on?
Moving on. There were no new positions in the general fund in 2018.
There were ten requests.
Down from what, forty-nine last year that were requested?
I think that forty-nine included the special funds.
Yeah.
Right.
I think it was twenty-seven.
This is just the general fund. There are a couple in the special funds that were authorized. I think two part maintenance workers, and I'll get you that exact list.
Do you have a total number of county employees? General fund county employees?
We can get it.
Okay.
Just general fund?
Just general.
Because I think the total of employees right now is a thousand fifty-three, but that includes all the special funds.
Where would you like to go from here?
Let's see, now, you want to bring up any...
Well, let me, before we get to that, so last year, you asked for a position in the Department of Human Resources to look at one, approximately a third of the employee classifications every year. And so HR came back with some re-class recommendations, there weren't many, but we can give you the list of those. Whatever they recommended, we did include, so, because otherwise, the whole thing goes down the tubes again, and we end up three or four years down the road, and you have to make big jumps with people. So based upon their condition. So the only changes you're seeing in the budget are the two percent raise in terms of compensation and the classification changes that they're doing to those people. In addition to that, we have two positions in juvenile, two detention officers that have been unfunded or in multiple years, and they remain unfunded in eighteen. And we have two new positions in public health that will be not funded. One is we're completely going to redo how we handle STDs, and Hope's here to talk about that, and that means that we're going to be eliminating nurse practitioner. And the other thing that we're doing is in the WIC program, there's three staff in the state base, or through the women, infant, children program, and one that we were paying for, and we're not going to refill that one, that currently is empty in the WIC program. So I'll talk a little bit about, let me get in my seat so you can...
As Joanne said, we're looking at redoing how we do our STD services. We are working under a kind of an old model that we have used since, I believe, 2003. And what we have kind of seen over the years is, based on the way that we're set up and based on the way that we give our services, we can only do so much. Fifty percent of our clientele is no longer from the St. Charles County area. We see a good population from the city, we see a good population from St. Louis County, Lincoln County, surrounding counties. Our residents are using other services for those testing services. So while it sounds negative that we are eliminating something, we have looked at it and studied it pretty closely, and with our new electronic medical record system, it's going to allow us to bill for more services. So what we need to do is expand our services so that we have more billable services available and provide more community services for our actual population that needs those services. Right now, we do no chronic disease management or no chronic disease programs. By restructuring our STD clinic and turning it into chronic disease and TB, we'll be able to do things like lipid panels, cholesterol testing, glucose, lead testing, so all those services, while they're billable, so it increases our revenue, it completely decreases our overhead costs, increase our rising lab fees that we're paying, our medical supplies for our STD clinic is really through the roof right now. We get no state support or federal support for this program at all, so it's completely funded out of general revenue, and very, very little of it is built back and increases our revenue in any way, shape, or form, and our clientele is much lower.
Hope, can you talk a little bit about rapid testing versus how we're doing it, and the referral process, and also about the Hep C?
Sure. So some of the different things that we'll be doing, we won't be eliminating completely our STD services, we'll do more of what a lot of other health departments do, is the rapid testing. So it'll be a blood test or a urine analysis. What we're taking away is that physical culture that you go in and receive from the nurse practitioner. But what this will open up, instead of just doing STD clinic and consultation within that area, here's kind of a list of everything that we will maintain, move over to that area, and add to it. We'll be doing STD rapid testing and consultations, we'll continue with our HIV program, we'll continue pregnancy testing to a wider variety. Right now, we limit our pregnancy testing, so for this past year, we've only done seven in our clinic for the entire year. We'll do a hepatitis C alliance. We currently provide that service, but it will be completely housed within this new program, and that's doing case management for those who have hepatitis C. We'll start lead consultations and screenings. We'll be doing, as I alluded to, the lipid panels, so cholesterol testing, glucose testing, kind of opens up doors for our diabetes management and so forth. We're going to be doing titers testing, which is something that is requested quite often along...
What's it called?
Titers. It's basically to check immunity, whether or not you would need a vaccine for A, B, or C. We'll expand to travel vaccinations. One of the things that we haven't been able to do is expand travel vaccine because yellow fever, typhoid require a consultation with a nurse, and we just don't have the time to do that one full day consultation, so we'll be able to fit in a consultation and offer that service now. And then again, BMI screenings, blood pressure screenings will be a part of our routine services, well checks, instead of just doing them, we feel somebody possibly just needs to have the blood pressure checked. So it's something that we don't do as a chronic disease program now. So although it is, you know, it sounds negative in the beginning, there's a lot of positives that we can do with this program. I think that will be more attractive right now with us just minding ourselves as the STD clinic. We don't get a wide variety of clientele, and we don't hit the age groups that you would even think, students, we don't charge them anything, and our student population that we see is almost zero because they're going to other places. So I think that we'll be able to attract that clientele by restructuring as well.
Mr. Crowe? I heard you mention about providing services to people outside this county, okay? If I want to go swimming into a swim pool, the city will foul, and I have to pay a non-resident fee, okay? I mean, do you ask for, is there a different fee structure if you're a non-resident or resident? They're getting the same deal as our residents?
Yes.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair to our residents personally. I'm not saying we need to make money on those non-residents, no differently than maybe the city will foul, doesn't make any money when I go swim in that pool. But I think if they're a non-resident and they're not contributing to tax basis county, I don't quite see the fairness in charging them, a non-resident the same as a resident. So if you're revamping fee structures, is that a possibility?
Well, one thing we have to be careful of, due to the fact that we are a health department, we can only charge a certain percentage over what the actual cost is. So we have to be very careful in our calculations that we don't go too far beyond. We just raised our prices in STD, I believe, last year, and if I, I think we're at the max of what we can charge for the services that we give them. So the thing that's going to be different is, right now, we have such a limited clientele, we don't have a wide range of billable services for all of those who have insurance. So we're just, we're in this like tiny little sector, and we're, this is going to open us up more, more of a wider clinical setting. So the services we provide, we will collect more revenue from that. So we're really cutting our overhead in half and providing services that will bring in more revenue. So I completely understand what you're saying, and I wish that there could be a different fee structure, but right now, if we did that, we have so little clientele that we would be drowning.
Do other counties, I'm just curious, like other counties, like if I want to go into Clayton, St. Louis County to the health department, would they not ask if I'm a resident in St. Louis County? They provide those services free, anybody walks in the door?
Based on their fee structure, yeah, they would still provide it.
Okay. So to your knowledge, no one around here charges different structures for residents, non-residents?
All the health departments do that. It's, I'm curious why somebody from the city of St. Louis would come out to St. Charles, I mean, other than you're so nice, but what's the impetus to come here? Can they get appointments, or is it overcrowded, or?
It could be where they're located in the county. The St. Louis County Health Department really isn't that located that far from us, they're in Berkeley. It could be just they want to, for the type of services that they are receiving, they may want to get outside of their county and remain as anonymous as possible. It could be really, we don't really dive into deeply as to why they're outside the county, but it's about fifty percent that we see.
Fifty percent are outside.
Outside. And this past year, it's actually been a little bit higher.
Just in the STD or in all of...
Just in STD, yes.
What about, what about if we look at overall, the...
Overall, our, if you look at our immunization clinic, I mean, probably eighty percent of our clientele is St. Charles County residents.
Did you see how much that's costing us? Fifty percent number?
It's not really costing us any differently based on residents, it's just, it's just a low number in general. It's just a low service amount.
It's the structure of the program that's been costing us. So we have a nurse practitioner...
So we have a nurse practitioner and that person is about half the time making phone calls to people with their blood test responses. And those are booked in an hour each, depending upon the consultation need. It may take 10 or 15 minutes or it may take half an hour, but they're booked in that. And then they're like, I think, Hope looked at the actual in-house appointments that were set up for the remainder of the year, a couple weeks ago, and there were less than 20 of those. It was like 19, a whole lot less than that between now and the end of the year as opposed to the blood test and culture results. So the structure of the program right now is based on this very intensive model. We got a large number of no-shows who book their appointment and then don't show up. We have a large percentage of people who are from outside the county and there just really aren't a lot of this type of model left in STD clinics. Instead, what people have gone to is the rapid test, letting people know if they have an issue and then getting them referred to services. And that's what we're going to switch to.
And to elaborate, you mentioned no-show rate. In 2016, it was 856 and 2017, it was 769 so far. That's a high no-show rate.
All right. Bob mentioned something also about a reduction in services for WIC. If you could go into that a little bit more, I didn't quite follow exactly what.
It would be a reduction in services. Right now, there's a vacant position that's not filled. So the, the WIC contract only covers a certain portion of the total funds needed to run the entire program. So for the portion that the county is covering, they're just going to not fill that position so that the grand tire is the majority of the program.
Okay.
The councilman's asking though, will there be a reduction if we hold up what we will see?
Yeah, there will.
Okay. Did you have a question?
Back to this, I just want to make sure I understand. On the, the question is just, how many people are we seeing outside the county?
50%.
And how many people is that yearly approximately?
That's just in the STD part.
I know, that's what, you said 750, so 50%. Didn't you say 750?
That was no-shows.
750 no-show?
Yeah, so they set an appointment and then they didn't show up.
Wow. And so how many people, so you're seeing quite a few more people than 750?
So just for example, for 2016, the number of exams were one thousand three, so 50.
So 525 or something like that. Okay. So I'm just, I'm trying to figure this out. So how much does that cost to see 500 people? And is it considered the reason we're seeing them? We're taking people outside the county because it's just a community well-being thing or what's the purpose?
We don't, we don't know the full reasons as to why. It could be, like I said, they could be getting out of their existing county because of the type of services they're seeing or seeking. And it could be they're wanting to remain anonymous, they're wanting to get out of their community to take them. It could be that they used to be residents here and they've moved and they're comfortable and they come back here. We have repeat customers that come in on a regular basis. I don't, I can't tell you the full reasons behind the surrounding counties that come there. But what I can tell you are the numbers of, you know, we did 1,053 exams, we had about a 50% St. Charles County rate and then we had about an 856 no-show rate last year.
So how much is that costing? I mean, that's multiple, that's five, six people a day you're seeing or whatever or more.
It's a very expensive program. I think we calculated that the program annually runs us somewhere between 350 and 400,000.
The three, just that one, 300 to 400,000? So that's costing, is that costing our county?
Don't put me on that, let me get you those first.
Right, so the costs are made up largely of the.
No, no, here's, Joanne, here's the question, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So the, why are, why are we paying for non-residents? I mean, if there's a reason, there has to be a reason. Why are we paying to examine non-residents that don't pay taxes in this county? Why aren't they staying in their own county? I don't care what their personal reasons are, I want to know why we're doing that.
Not every county has an STD clinic.
I don't care, I'm asking why. Give me a reason why. I mean, maybe it's the right thing to do, I don't know, I just want a reason why are we, if you're saying it costs 400,000, then that would be 200,000 we're paying for non-residents. I just want to know why we're doing it.
Technically, as an STD clinic and a health department, if somebody shows up with needed services, we don't really have the right to refuse them of treating them with a communicable disease. From a public health standpoint, if somebody comes to us and needs treatment, I don't care where you live because you're going to go to the next person, you're going to spread that and it's going to come back to our county anyway. So we treat everybody who seeks treatment. There's never been a provision since I've been here that's eliminated non-residents from seeking treatment.
And we're not, we're a public health department.
I'm not saying that's a bad answer, I just kind of wanted to know the answer, that's all, I, you know.
It's a disease prevention thing more than anything.
Well, that's the answer.
And it's a, it's a model that's aged out. And so that's why, especially this budget year, we asked the departments to consider, what are the things you can do differently that, you know, would help us to also save some money here? And this is one that Hope identified is we could totally change the model, get out of all of this in-depth work. Instead, go to the rapid testing, get people referred for services, which is what a lot of, the majority of people who are facing an STD are doing that anyway. And then that means we don't need the nurse practitioner anymore, which is the most expensive part of the staff. Sorry, I'm staring at you.
No, I know, there's lights in the way.
But that then also allows us to take the other nurse and the nursing assistant that are in there and use them for services that we know that citizens of this county are asking us for. Hepatitis C follow-up and testing, the immunizations for travel. We get a tremendous number of churches and businesses in this county. Most people need to travel overseas and the immunization package they need in order to make those trips is sometimes very difficult to find. Hope's been talking to me for two years about needing to be able to move into that area. We figured out a way by, by using that non-nurse practitioner, the regular nurse, to be able to get into that, which does serve our citizens.
Did we receive any revenue from state and federal funding for our health department at all?
Oh, for the health department, we do in various programs, but not in the STD program.
Okay.
Joe?
Looking at the budget, and we can touch on this in future meetings, but just basically, you know, the health department is about 2.1 million, 2.2 million dollars a year is what their budget is. We're getting back in revenue about 1.4 million. So basically, we're getting back about, you know, 2/3 of what we're spending in the health department. So we're subsidizing to the tune of about 1/3 of what it costs. So all, I understand the reasoning with the STDs, you don't want them charged to the general population, but some of this other stuff, there's a way to structure where non-residents are paying a little bit more to understand the fact that we're, we're putting in 1/3 of your budget is not being reimbursed by, by the users of your department, okay? I think that would be a more fair way to do it, no different than the analogy that you did for the swimming pool. I pay more because I'm not a resident and it costs money to run that swimming pool. It costs money to run your health department, so, you know, I think that might be something you look at if you redo a fee structure. I mean, if somebody does, they want a immunization to travel overseas and they happen to live in St. Louis County but live or work at MasterCard, I see no reason why they shouldn't pay a few more bucks than the guy that's working in the county, okay? Lives in county. One more question on the STDs. Do they make, do they pay a fee at all? I don't understand.
She was a $20.
For everybody, okay. So that's what you're saying, Mr. Cronin, is that if they're a non-resident, you should pay more or something? I'm saying that about 1/3 of her budget isn't reimbursed by the users of the department, okay? So we're subsidizing her department to turn about 1/3 of it, okay? So some taxpayers are. So why shouldn't they pay more differently than anything else? You pay. I don't disagree with that, but what is, Hope, what does St. Louis County do with that?
With which program?
With STDs. Do they, do they, do they do that? Do they do any kind of?
No, there's no health departments that I'm aware of, but none around here that charge a different fee for it.
But do they have a health department that does it and do they charge the same 20 bucks?
I don't know what.
And do they take St. Charles County residents?
I don't know what their fee is, but I know that whatever it is, it's not different for an outside resident as it is for an outside resident.
Wouldn't you guys like to know if St. Louis County takes St. Charles County residents?
She said they do.
You did say that?
They do.
Oh, I thought, oh, I didn't.
And in fact, they took a lot of our, you know, we had a reduction in staff briefly right during our busy season. They took a lot of our patients throughout the summer to get us through the summer and really helped us out, so we all kind of worked together.
Any other questions on that? Are you fulfilled all your STD questions for the day?
Cronin's going to have to pay more than 20 bucks, I guess.
All right, so before this goes off the rails. You walked in right in the middle of STDs, I don't know.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Most interesting story about people being able to come from St. Louis County and get services in St. Charles County. And I don't know, I guess they still can, but you can go anywhere and get a lot, and get a marriage license, okay? Well, all the people in North St. Louis County are closer to our county seat than they are to Clayton. And back in the 1920s, the county got a letter from the census and it wanted to know why we had three times the normal number of marriages in St. Charles County that, that a county our size. And they thought it was some sort of weird demographic going on and everything and we had to explain to them. They had to write a letter back and said, that's all the people came out here because it was closer than going to Clayton.
There you go. Anything else with Hope?
Yeah?
Thank you very much.
I have two last things in our report. One very brief, and that is when you look at the Parks Department, you'll notice there's a new format. Each of the county parks is its own separate cost center now to where the costs associated with that park are independently illustrated. So you'll be able to take a look at parks on an individual basis.
Good.
So that is in the 18 budget. The, I know, you know, we talked a lot about some relatively negative trends and some pressures on the, on the general fund budget. But in the end, we have to be financially responsible for, for the money that is entrusted to us. And generally, I think we do a good job of that, I think we always have. I've got about 22 years of experience now with county government and I know it's always been a mainstay of philosophy and the county executive is very much on board with that too and the fiscal conservative that he is. And to that end, the, you heard about the Better Together study? And Ashley, if you can put that last slide up, if you don't mind, please. Two years, two and a half years ago, St. Louis County and St. Louis City put together an effort to say, it's better for us to be combined than it is apart. So they did this Better Together study and they updated that study this year. So initially, county executive had me do a Better Together study for St. Charles County to see how we stacked up. And with the issuance of the supplemental report this year by St. Louis City and County in the Better Together effort, we updated our numbers once again. And the top portion of that shows the per capita cost of government in St. Louis City at $2,627 a resident. St. Louis County, $1,690 a resident and St. Charles County, $1,437.
That just means we need to raise.
Obviously. That's county, cities, fire districts, library district, ambulance, everything. And it's a, it's an apples-to-apples comparison. So we dissected the Better Together study that was performed across the river and we used the same ingredients, if you will, so that we made sure that we have a good apples-to-apples comparison. But in the two years since the first study, that the bottom portion of that graph tells a little bit more about how we're doing compared to our peers. And that is when you take all of St. Louis City and St. Louis County and combine them, their cost of government in the last two years went up by 5.7%. The percentage of all governments in St. Charles County went up by 6.3%. But that includes, as county executive said, that includes all the fire districts around, we did not include school districts, but all the fire districts and all of the other cities as well as county government. But when you extract St. Charles County, that bottom line there, looking at our increase over the last two years, our increase is 3.3%. The other telling fact there is the fact that in this two-year period, St. Louis City and St. Louis County dropped in population by 8,625 residents. And in the same period, we gained 16,722 residents. So compared to our peers, we look pretty good. But it's only because of conservative financial discipline that gets those numbers to where they are. Bottom line is we're spending less per person now than we did five years ago.
That information Ms. Singer needs to send out to the press or editors, I think that's pretty complimentary to the county. Elliot Davis calls me about once a year and I did tell him one time, I said, St. Louis, St. Charles County has more residents out of the city than St. Louis. Maybe part of the reason is we have seven council members for the whole county, they have 28 aldermen, so they have four times more elected officials, plus they pay them three times more than the guys in this council. So that didn't make the Channel 2 news, but I thought it was pretty interesting.
So.
You have one more thing?
No, that's it.
That is it.
Just wanted to end on a little bit more of a positive, though. All the negativity here with the presentation up to this point.
Anyone have any more questions for this portion?
We have an agenda for next one.
Yeah, so in the, next one, we'll start going through the departments. We send out an invitation.
To the elected officials.
To all of the elected officials, asking them if they wanted to come and speak. To this point, I haven't heard from any of them. Have you, have we had any?
I've heard from one.
We've heard from one, okay. So more to follow in a couple of weeks, so. We'll break down and reconvene at 7 o'clock for our regular meeting.
Does anybody like to visit with Ryan Graham of the Leesys here?
I saw him out in the hall, so I know he's anxious if anybody would like to.
He's been standing out there eyeing us for the last half hour, so yeah. All right.